June 11th, Westfield Washington School Board Trustees Meeting is now in session. Thank you for joining us this evening. We're glad to see so many of you here. Since we do have a quorum, we will stand for a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance. Alright, thank you. This evening, we do have a comment card, so I will quickly just read through the rules. So if anyone else would like to make a comment, you must fill out a comment card. The public comments are limited to items on the agenda. Each commenter is allowed three minutes to speak. The total time allowed for commenting at a school board meeting is thirty minutes. In the event of time constraints, priority will be given to Westfield Washington School, parents, students, staff, and Westfield residents. If someone wishes to make a comment about something not on the agenda, they may email the board. So tonight, the items open to public comment: Consent Agenda, Permission to Advertise, Build/Operate/Transfer RFP Centennial Road Site Water Main, Permission to Advertise Construction Manager WHS South Locker Room Edition, Out-of-State WHS Boys Soccer Summer Team Camp, Batch Five and Six Policies, ELC Resource Adoption K-5 and 6-8, Multilingual Newcomer Resource Adoption, and the 2024-25 Student Handbook. So, at this time, would Megan Schough please join us?
Good evening. My name is Megan Schough, and I have two children here in Westfield Schools. My daughter will be in fifth grade at the intermediate school, and my son will be in third grade at Oak Trace. I work in education as instructional coach, primarily focusing on literacy instruction. My work over the last few years has been steeped in the research on what makes competent and proficient readers. I'm here tonight to speak in favor of the board approving CKLA for the elementary literacy programming. The science of reading, which I'm sure you've heard of, is a fancy term for the culmination of reading research that has been conducted over the last several decades. It explains what is required for every child to become a proficient reader. This science is derived from many fields, including cognitive psychology, education, special education, linguistics, and implementation science. Scarborough's Reading Rope, depicted here, developed by Hollis Scarborough in 2001, she was a reading researcher and cognitive psychologist. She has depicted the skills, oops, sorry, right here, the skills needed to become proficient readers. On the bottom, we have word recognition, which is the ability to lift words off the page for instant effortless retrieval. And the top, we have language comprehension, which is comprised of background knowledge, having information about a topic, vocabulary, having both breadth and depth, so knowing a lot of words, but knowing a lot of words very deeply, language structures, which includes syntax and semantics, because comprehension can break down even at the sentence level, verbal reasoning, which includes making inferences, which requires background knowledge, and lastly, literacy knowledge, which includes genre and text structures. Word recognition needs to become increasingly automatic through practice opportunities, and language comprehension needs to become more strategic to promote skilled reading. What makes CKLA unique is that it has been built from the bottom up on this research. It has not been retrofitted or backfilled to say that it is science of reading, but it's been built on this foundational research. It supports word recognition through direct, explicit, and systematic phonics instruction in the primary grades, and that phonics instruction is threaded through the text sets. It supports language comprehension by being a knowledge-building curriculum that organizes its content into thematic units and through explicit teaching of high utility vocabulary. In order to learn something, we have to know something. CKLA builds knowledge by teaching thematic units centered around science, history, and literature. It builds the foundation, or the velcro, for future learning and reading. Because CKLA has been built from this research on what makes proficient readers for all students, I fully support and encourage the board to approve CKLA for adoption for elementary literacy programming. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now continue with our meeting. The next item on the agenda is approval for the Consent Agenda. Consent Agenda items include minutes, board minutes, accounts payable vouchers, payroll vouchers, personnel report. All items in the Consent Agenda have been reviewed by the board in advance of tonight's meeting and are approved in a single motion. At this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as presented. Thank you, Bill.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve the Consent Agenda. Is there any discussion or any questions at this time? No? Okay. Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion passes. Thank you. Alright, so... You want to do it now?
Yeah, if we could do that now. In the Consent Agenda included personnel, and this evening, you just approved the retirement of Stacy McGuire. So, just want to say a little bit about Stacy and her having an opportunity. And we'll have other times later on before Stacy leaves to celebrate Stacy at some sort of event. We'll publicize that. But twenty-eight years total in the school district, Westfield grad. I think over a hundred and sixty years, her family's been in the community. Teacher, assistant principal, principal, and then I've had the honor to work with her the last four years in HR, and she's been a great, a great help, a friend for a long time. Can't even, we'd be here for a long time if I would state all the different things that Stacy has done for our school district. But most importantly, she was, has built positive relationships with our staff and has made a difference in Westfield over her tenure. So I just want to say congratulations to Stacy McGuire as she moves out of education into another field. She can maybe share a little bit about that this evening, but we obviously thank her for her years of service and for all she's done for Westfield. So a round of applause for Stacy. Stacy, I don't know if you want to say a few things?
Yeah. It definitely makes the most sense. You don't walk away from something, maybe you have loved, and maybe you're so grateful. But I was very privileged, and I think if I could go through that, and kind of start taking inventory and start looking at things. And I think what I've come to think of, and I was just beginning, I do, and I live, and I leave, I go, and I left. And when I am doing those things, I am at my best, I am at my happiest. And I have been absolutely blessed to be able to do that for the majority of my career here and to be able to do it in a place that raised me and loved me, that I felt like I could give back to, is an experience that not many people get to have. And when I first came back to Westfield, if you would have told me at eighteen I was coming back, I, that was not my intention. When I grew up and left here, I was going to save the world and do all sorts of amazing things out there, right? But I'm so glad that somebody saw something. It was Bob Brower and Markeen that saw something and this twenty-four-year-old girl to come back and then gave me all the opportunities and said, there's so much room, and you're going to have my hand in changing that. And again, I've had a career of a lifetime to be able to put those things together and do all of that. So I just think, like I said, it's, those things are what I do best, are what I love, they're one of my best. And I'm kind of seeking that out, and I got recruited by a company that really saw what I did at Westfield, translated that, and wants me to do that for their growing company, created a spot on their executive team for me so I could strategically lead them through the process and build and grow their people. So I just think it's time, not just to survive, but go and thrive and try something else. So again, we would be here a long time, too. The accomplishments and the success that they've accomplished, that the success we're in is, as a result of that, we're absolutely ever.
Stacy, I want to thank you personally. You've set us up for success like no other school district in the area. And all the lives you've touched, not only teachers, but students and everything else as a principal and a teacher when you were there. So thank you for everything you've done.
Can I also just add our appreciation as a board, even when we had a strategic planning? The vision of our Board of Trustees is that all rocks are life-ready. And of course, that is a legacy that you will be marked with bringing and seeing the vision and creating that in so many ways that even as a board, as a board member, as a parent, really embraced and can see how that will live beyond all of us. So thank you for bringing that to our community and all the gifts that you've given along the way. So, thank you.
I'll say thank you as well. As you embark into the private sector, been in there for thirty years. You're gonna, it's got pros and cons. You will excel. You'll do great. And you know, if you need anything, let me know, but you'll be fine. You won't need anything. So congratulations, and thank you.
I have one other presentation real quick. As you know, we give out service awards. We did that recently. We do that for board members as well, and we are doing Amazon gift cards. So I have, for five years of service, both Rebecca Ogul and Bill Anderson, fifty-dollar gift cards. So thank you for your years of service to the schools and on the school board. So congratulations.
Thanks, Stacy. Alright. Every month, we look forward to hearing about up... Hearing updates from our construction partners on projects taking place throughout the district. And tonight, we are pleased to welcome Chris from Core Construction to provide an update on the tennis complex and the Virginia F. Wood Early Learning Center expansion.
Oh, you're good. To what? Yeah, just, she's pulling it up right now.
It just got sent today, Mike, so it's not in the packet.
Yeah, I believe it's just a PDF, so it's... So yeah, good evening, board. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to present again. It's always fun to be in front of you all and let you know how things are going from a construction standpoint. On another note, obviously, we had the groundbreaking here a few weeks back, which was a great success. It was great to see the rugby team out with their success of winning. I mean, that's really cool to have those guys present for an opportunity like that. So just to start, we got the tennis complex. We are still, great news, we are still on track to be completed by August first. In all reality, probably a couple of weeks before that, which is great. We have been in talks with the city on any specifics they're going to acquire for you guys to be able to occupy that space. And there's really nothing on their end. They said, as long as we keep the building work segregated from the tennis complex, they're perfectly fine with you guys utilizing those courts and using them as you see fit. So that's really good news there. We opened bids last week for the tennis, or for the building itself. Right now, we're working through final numbers to get Brian's approval on that. There's been documentation issued to Brian Kelly this week to allow us to move forward with footings and foundation work. So you should start seeing the excavator go on the ground here in the next couple of weeks to start digging the footings and foundations for that building. Right now, we're looking at a targeted completion of this November. So hopefully, everything goes smooth, and we can start getting that building up and get it turned over to you all as quickly as we can. So just some photos here. You can see the fencing starting to go up around the courts. The guys are pouring sidewalks around the perimeter of the courts and down the center. You can keep moving forward here. There, you can just see, that's the far south end of the courts. We got that all graded with grass seed down, so that can start growing. And then that big pile of dirt is now gone, and that's where the building is going to sit. So they've been hauling all of that out in preparation to start building that building. Here's just kind of a, an overview of the entire footprint. I did have a drone shot of it, but it was a couple of weeks old, and it didn't show all the courts being completed, so I didn't want to display that here. But all the courts are now poured out. We're just, like I said, we're just working in the middle sidewalks and working on getting the fencing up. So this is a really cool view to show those championship courts and how vast really the complex is. And then here, we have a mock-up that we did for what the actual courts will look like. This was reviewed yesterday by a handful of people, and I believe there's one or two more that need to look at it and give us their blessing to move forward. But those logos, those logos will be on the courts. That'll be the color of the courts. It's going to be really sharp when it's all said and done. So it was, it was really cool to be able to do that and let it be permanent. So that's at the entry of the school there. So that's going to stay there, and that'll, that'll always be present there at that school. Yeah, it's like a tanish. Yep, yep. If anything needs to be changed, that's why we review it. So you guys can take a look, and anything that needs to be changed, we can, so. Yeah, yeah, yep, yep. It does. Yeah, it does look good in person. So for the Early Learning Center, obviously, you can see that we've started here. Our site fencing is up. They're working on site grading. You can see they started stripping into the rugby fields, and they're demoing some fence around the softball fields now at this point. So work is in full force. We're going to start footings and foundations next week. So you'll start seeing concrete trucks showing up. We'll start getting the structure put in place. Structural steel is scheduled to be here in early July. And then, like I said, here, the softball fields, we're working on here through the month of June. A lot going on. You can see photos here. There's our construction entry on the far north side of the property here. There's a gate. If you guys kind of look at how that entry is, there's a gate a little bit further in than that to keep it locked so that we can keep people out during off-hours. You can see here, kind of in the picture, that's a little bit of our lay-down area on the far north side of the existing school. We have our trailer there as well. So we're, it's, it's good. We're in full force here. Go on to the next one, please. So here, you can see grading on the, on the west side of the property. That existing fence that is there has now been removed. We did a little bit of concrete removal in that playground area over the past couple of days. We are in the process, I believe tomorrow, they're going to start putting up our new construction fence in that area. So the kids will still have full access to that entire space. We didn't remove anything on their end that they wouldn't be able to use, which will be great. And then there, you can just see in the picture on the right, just the earthwork progress. It's, it's a lot of dirt to move out there for sure, with all the stripping that we need to do of that site to get it to grade and get it ready for the new import that has to come in. So on a, on a really cool note, these are three of thirty pieces of artwork that the students and staff at the school have done over the past month. And what we're going to do is we're going to take that and put it onto a giant canvas, and that will be the screening that is attached to the fence that divides the playground and our construction project. So instead of just putting up a boring green screen, the kids can actually see their artwork every day when they're out there. And it's just a really cool story to let the kids feel like they're involved. So just a, kind of a happy note there that I wanted to throw on there. So yeah, it's just a thank you to the students and staff and Marcy for helping organize that and get them all involved to do that. So that's, that's all I have. If there's any questions, I'm more than willing to take them now.
No, thank you for letting the staff and the kids get involved in that. That'd be a lifetime of memories.
Yeah, and we'll do construction tours, you know, as, as we move forward with it, and we really like to get them involved, so. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Alright, and now for business and operation portion of the meeting, we'll turn it to Brian Tommichael for the next agenda item, which is Permission to Advertise, Build/Operate/Transfer RFP Centennial Road Site Water Main.
If it's okay with the board, can I do the next two items together? They're around the same. Okay. So both the next two items request permission to advertise. The first one is, we have to do a pretty large infrastructure work on the new Centennial site, and a large piece of that is a water main that has to run from Ditch Road all the way over to Centennial Road, and then a sewer main that has to run from Little Eagle Creek all the way over to Centennial Road. In conversation with some of the groups we're working with now, we feel the best way to do that project's going to be a build/operate transfer. That is similar to how they built the library. Really, it's a lot of the same process as we go through otherwise, but the nuance to it that is allowed is we can pick the best vendor for, and price, which, when we're putting a giant water main down the side of State Road 32, we want to make sure that we're working with somebody that does water mains for a living and is used to putting them in tight spots. So it is not necessarily going to be the lowest-cost provider at that point, which if we did our traditional kind of CMC method, it is the lowest bid wins. We want to make sure that we can work with a company that does this routinely every day along major roadways and with the most minimal impact to the homeowners, the businesses, the road, as we work running that water pipe down a main stretch. Bots for schools are a pretty new piece. I believe one other school system has done one in the state to this point. So for that, we are still working through some nuances with our legal team, with CCHA, just on what exact steps we have to take to make sure we meet all the guidelines of the law. But so we can be ready to go and hit the ground running, we are asking permission to advertise as we finalize that process here in the next few weeks. The second piece, the long-awaited South Locker Room at Westfield High School, as well as additional academic space as well. We have been working with Schmidt Architects on the really, really early phases of starting to discuss that project. And one thing we would like to do is also go ahead and bring a construction manager onboard as well. We are looking at a fifty-million-dollar budget for that project to do roughly a two-to-three-story South Locker Room that will have academic space, as well as addressing the performing arts area at the high school as well. Within that academic space and working with the high school will be math and science, ag, other areas where they need additional classrooms as well. So it is not just athletics and performing arts, it is a lot of academics as well. But in order to start that process, which will be under kind of that traditional CMC method that we've been doing, or construction manager at risk, we just need the board's permission to advertise that RFP. Both of those advertisements and then approvals and then working through the process, we would look to bring probably a recommendation to the board as early as the August meeting at this point. So that is our request.
Thank you. So at this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the Permission to Advertise, Build/Operate/Transfer RFP Centennial Road Site Water Main as presented, along with the Permission to Advertise Construction Manager for what WHS South Locker Room Edition as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. There is a, it has been moved and seconded. To, oh gosh, I've got to read to. Okay, sorry, guys. It has been moved and seconded to approve the Permission to Advertise, Build/Operate/Transfer RFP, as well as Permission to Advertise Construction Manager for the WHS South Locker Room Edition. Is there any discussion or any questions? Okay, hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Final item for you, Brian Tommichael, is the WHS Boys Soccer Summer Team Camp.
So Westfield High School Boys Soccer Team are looking to travel to Columbus, Ohio to attend the 2024 Ohio State University Team Camp, June 21st through 23rd. The team will travel three Westfield coaches and be transported by school vehicles. They will be staying at a hotel near the OSU campus. The cost of the trip is $200, which includes hotels and tickets to the Columbus Crew Soccer Game, paid for by student athletes. The camp costs $1,000, and money will be raised by whole team fundraising. So via board policy, we'd ask the board to approve the overnight field trip out of state.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I entertain a motion to approve the WHS Boys Soccer Team Camp Trip to Columbus, Ohio as presented.
So moved.
Is there a second? Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve the WHS Boys Soccer Summer Team Camp Trip to Columbus, Ohio. Is there any discussion or any questions? Oh, jeez.
I'm sorry, as a Bully Maker fan, I did not know that.
Alright, okay. Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion passes. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the second reading of the fifth batch of policies that Dr. Atha will present this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Willis, members of the board. So as we continue to do a comprehensive review and update of our policies, we introduced Batch Five last meeting, and so this would be a second read, and then we would recommend approval. So the policies are, for a second read, C425 Student Suicide Prevention and Awareness, F100 Internal Controls and Reporting Losses, Shortages, Variances, or Thefts, F125 Purchasing Procedures and Capital Assets, F150 Use of Credit Cards, F175 Collection and Forgiveness of Debt, F176 Unpaid Mills, F200 Investment Income, F225 Fundraising and Crowdfunding, F250 Travel Expenses, F275 Gifts and Donations, and G100 is Facility and Transportation Safety. So these draft policies have been publicly posted on our webpage under Board Docs since May 14. They've been reviewed by district leaders and key personnel. So, and a lot of these are from the business side. If you have specific questions, Mr. Tommichael might be the one to answer those if there are any. But pretty straightforward, most of these were required either by the all their state board accounts to have a lot of this. So we would recommend that the, the board adopt these policies on second reading.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the adoption of the fifth batch of policies as presented.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Jimmy. It has been moved and seconded to approve the fifth batch of policies. Is there any discussion or any questions? The only question I had, Brian, was maybe going back to a social media post about somebody complaining that their kiddo's lunch bill got so high. I know that sometimes social media is not accurate, of course, but the policy was reading if anything over $10, the parent is notified, and then notified again. I think my son alone can eat $10 of food at the high school in like one sitting. So how, how does this policy prevent from the bills to becoming, you know, $500, $1,000?
Yeah, so Jimmy and I actually talked about this a little bit earlier as well. So with the policy, really, it is, we've always functioned under that we do not have an alternative meal for a child. So if they show up and don't have food in their, or money in their account, they get the standard, what is considered the reimbursable meal by the state. So your milk, your pizza, vegetable, and fruit. And that will always be given. So that, that can add about $3.50, $3.75 every time to their balance. Once they hit that $10 amount, they can no longer get the extras, which is where, especially, you know, like your son or my son, if they're getting, you know, two, three slices of pizza, it can add up. So that, that is to cut that piece off. It has technically been in place for a while, but through the outsourcing of the company and some other pieces, it was not always strongly enforced. So that will change moving forward, especially as it's in-house. And then we're also working on making sure that those notices go out. And as we switch lunch systems this year, you should also, as a parent, receive more immediate notices as soon as your child's account goes negative as well. So we have some work to do on our end of just making sure we're notifying parents and keeping that active to where you see that it's going negative. And then also a reminder to parents that within the system, you can set restrictions on your children as well if you want to reduce their ability on a normal basis to buy al cards and some of those other items.
How do we encourage more parents to auto-loan credit cards?
So, I mean, we run into that in a lot of things we do. I mean, whether it's, you know, sports fees or book fees or any of our fees across the board. it, it is a constant challenge for us to have people pay their bills. So, you know, we're, we're continuing to work on that, continuing to find better ways to notify people, whether it's email, text, Google Chats, mail, any way we can. Also Stacy Luke in our office does a lot of work to, we'll set parents upon payment plans for completely free. There's no charge to that as well, just to try to get families to pay more timely as we go through it.
Okay, I appreciate that. All right, so now we'll take a quick vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion passes. Thank you. Dr. Atha, we will go back to you for the first reading of Batch Six Policies.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Willis, members of the board. So the Batch Six then would be first reading policies that we're introducing this evening and making available to the public on our website. So those are A301 Wireless Communication Device Policy, C525 Medical Needs at School, C600 Withdrawal from School, E125 Promotion, Placement, and Retention of Students, E150 Programs for High Ability Students, E200 Credit for Religious Education, E225 College and University Programs, F300 Time and Effort, F325 Debt Management, and F350 Reserve and Liquidity. So those copies, those again are being reviewed by key personnel in our organization. And we'd ask the board then to review those. And then at our next regularly scheduled meeting, we would do a second read. If you have any questions on those as you review, you can reach out to Stacy Pratt, who would forward it to the appropriate person, whether it's Mike Hall or one of the departments. There's no action required for this this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Atha. If the board has any questions related to these batch of policies, we will reach out to you or Mr. Michael. And next, is it you or Ryan?
I'll start.
Okay, so Dr. Atha and Ryan will present the next item on the agenda for curriculum, the English Language Arts Resource Adoption for Grades K through five.
Thank you, Mrs. Willis and members of the board. So since Dr. Kaiser and I arrived around curriculum and instruction and resource adoption, you'll hear him often mention a term consensus process or going through a process. In the professional learning communities, we call that collective inquiry and then into a consensus process. And what collective inquiry means is you get a group together and they study an issue or an initiative or a problem. And they study it and learn together over time. And then in this case, we're reviewing reading materials, English Language Arts materials, because of a change in the state, both in our standards and, and also what materials we can use. And so through that process, then, we need to come to one resource, right? And so if the board will give me the liberty of just, I'm going to read from Rick DeFor, a comment about the process that we utilize. And it says, "While leaders should strive for unanimous support of an initiative, they typically will have, have to settle for something less. I have found the following definition of consensus to be more realistic as a benchmark. All points of view have been heard and the group's will is evident even to those who most oppose it." So this is a definition we use. Basically, what we say is through this process of study and learning, we're trying to get to one. Last year, when we did this for our reveal adoption for math, we were, we still didn't have 100% consensus, right? And so you rarely will get that. But then he goes on and says, "When those resistant to implementing the new process or procedure are in a position where they must acknowledge the group is ready to proceed, then it's the leader's responsibility to take action." So the focus should be on ensuring that we move forward with the, with the initiative or the implementation and that the focus is on the commitment to implement after all the work we've done. And so the reason for this, and, and he says, and research supports this, that deep understanding and commitment follow action, they do not precede it. So in other words, the idea that we can get buy-in on the front end is a myth. Buy-in happens when you try something new and you get different results, hopefully better results, and then you get more commitment and actually you get enthusiasm and, you know, become enthusiastic for it and you work hard at it. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Hoover. And he has some folks who were more deeply involved in the process, who are going to kind of present to the board where we are and our recommendation. And then also, I think you'll probably see their enthusiasm for moving forward into the next phase, which after board approval would be implementation. And then I can talk a little bit about that as well. So, Dr. Hoover?
Thank you, members of the board. I just wanted to very quickly thank you again for this opportunity. And Dr. Atha has laid out the timeline, obviously, for this. Before I speak anymore, I would like to introduce and have you listen to three of the members that were on our English and Language Arts Committee. So this group that is here with me today, we have Brittany Swain, Laura Mates, and Amanda Fitzley, that are instructional coaches and then classroom teachers that were also on the committee. And they're going to kind of provide you just some detail of, of the process, a little bit about their actual resource. And then I can follow up afterwards with any questions that you may have about any of the, any of the above. So at this time, I'm going to invite Brittany Swain up to begin the conversation.
Hi, I'm Brittany, and I'm currently the instructional coach at Cary Ridge Elementary. My kids all go to Oak Trace Elementary, so I'm also a parent in the district. And before I was a coach, I was a sixth grade language arts teacher for a lot of years. And so when we, when I started coaching, they said, "Let's take this sixth grade language arts teacher and have her work with all the kindergarten teachers." So I have the pleasure of working with all the kindergarten teachers in the district and have had to really relearn everything I knew about teaching language arts, because looking at it at a foundational level is completely different than looking at how you teach sixth graders. And that's become like a real passion of mine of how to get into the science of reading and teaching kids how the foundational skills they need. So CKLA was actually, I think this is really cool, the first publisher to actually make a curriculum based on the science of reading. They were the original, the OGs of science of reading. So they brought it up from the basis and have developed it all along the way. So they are the leading experts in that sense, that they've been doing it the longest. The program develops students' foundational literacy, literacy skills through that scope and sequence that focuses on phonics in K-2. So one fact that I've read in a bunch of different studies is at least 80% of our struggling readers, even at the high school level, if you break down why they're struggling, it's because of phonemic awareness, which is the sounds we hear, not the letters. So if we look, I mean, think 80% of even our high schoolers, if we ask them like, "What sounds do you hear?", they can't always identify it. And CKLA, they actually start their program with the sound first instead of learning the letter first. And so instead of going, "This is A, this is B", they actually have the kids start thinking through the sounds first. Like, "Ooh, you just heard ah", and then we move to what letters those are associated with. So it's looking at that oral language development of it. And we really felt in the program, I mean, we were all in a different program. We were all in Foundations K-2 and loving it. So if you really think about the fact that, especially our K-1 teachers pretty much unanimously said, "Yep, let's throw this out and start over", that's a huge thing, right? I didn't mention my mom also teaches kindergarten at Cary Ridge. Weird dynamic, coaching your mom. So I got to work with her on this process too. So with the sound-first approach, which is different than Foundations was for us, I thought, I loved this from the CKLA website. They said, you know, the English language has, English language has 26 letters that make 150 different spelling patterns that represent 44 sounds of language. And in a lot of the reading programs that you look at, kids are only taught a fraction of those spelling patterns. The rest, they're just supposed to figure out by exposure. CKLA focuses on teaching all 44 sounds and all 150 ways to spell those in K-2 so that when they finish second grade, they'll have been exposed to every spelling pattern there is. And one thing I loved about it, that we were all like, with kindergarten teachers going, "Oh, that makes sense", is in kindergarten, they only, they teach the spelling patterns that make the most sense first, which is a little bit different. You, we often say, "A says ah", but then we show them a pattern where A says "ay". And then they're like, "But you said it said ah", and that's confusing to kids. So CKLA actually starts with that. Okay, A says ah when it has an E on the end. And they teach them those, those spelling patterns that don't have exceptions to the rules, where we're not going, "Here's the rule", except in kindergarten, they're like, they're only teaching them the spelling patterns that don't have exceptions, which to me is really powerful. It also meets all of our Indiana standards, which not all the curriculum we looked at did. That was a big piece for us. And it also, the other thing that was different about CKLA is we've moved from, when we were younger, we, or even if you look five, 10 years ago, we taught kids to read books going, "I see a ball, I see a star". And they had, and it was really, kids were just memorizing words instead of learning to spell. So there's been a shift to decodable readers where we, they have to, they learn the spelling patterns and then those books only have those spelling patterns. A lot of the other programs were like, "Here's your decodable book, it's 85% decodable. It's 90% decodable." CKLA was the only program that every book, if you followed their phonics scope and sequence, was 100% decodable for kids. So we're handing kids books that they can read all on their own once we've taught them the spelling patterns. So that was really powerful to us. And that's kind of the K-2, building on the foundations. It does have a knowledge piece that goes with it. But I think for K-2 teachers, that foundational skills piece was by far the most important part for us, because if we build strong foundation of readers, then the comprehension comes. So Laura is going to talk to you more about the second branch of that, that knowledge building piece that kind of goes into the fifth grade.
Real quick, as Laura comes up to explain the knowledge piece, I just wanted to, first off, explain that Laura is an instructional coach here for us. She's coming to us as a former assistant principal and instructional coach from a different district and brought a great deal of knowledge. She's been through this process before, so she's been a wealth of information, has actually gone through this process with her former school. And so the science of reading was, she was one of our experts on the committee that, that brought that. Also, I, you're an expert in other areas. I did want to also say that when Brittany shared, I want to emphasize and underscore, one of the key concerns when we began this process back in August of this year, we had K through two foundations. And I will say, you know, after being in the district two years and seeing where we want to go with language arts, Foundations was probably the one piece of literacy that was aligned at all six elementary schools. We were doing it with fidelity and it was aligned across the district. The, the concerns I was getting before we started this process from teachers, especially teachers at third, fourth, and fifth grade was, is this going to be an objective and fair process? Because they were afraid our K through two teachers were going to stick with a resource that aligned with Foundations, which was one of the other four resources that we did not choose. And there was, and there was evidence that that might have been the choice, that would have been the simpler choice and, and quite honestly, the faster choice. As we went through this process, I thought it spoke volumes that our K through two teachers identified, that they found a resource that fit their children's needs more than the one that they already had, which ultimately means they were going to be adding more work and training to a process that was actually working pretty well. So I just wanted to underscore the fact that that was a, that was a big leap for our K through two teachers. And as Brittany shared, that was fairly much, you know, about 95% of them voted in favor of that. So without further ado, I'd like to turn it over to Laura Mates.
I'm very humbled by that introduction. Thank you so much for the opportunity to share some additional knowledge with you in regards to CKLA. As Dr. Hoover said, this was a wonderful process for me to be involved in personally. I'm very passionate about the, the ability for a student to learn to read, but almost more importantly, for them to understand. So as Brittany mentioned about the foundational skills, really the mechanics of how a student learns to decode, understanding that sound and letter correlation. My passion really, and what I'd like to share with you tonight, is really about them understanding the meaning of those words, right? And so one of the things that I think is just a hallmark of the CKLA program, as Megan mentioned, is that it's knowledge building. We know that there are lots of studies out there, including, I would encourage you to, to do a little research. There's one that's called the baseball study that shows that if we equipped even students that have low ability to read, but equip them with a lot of knowledge, that they can actually perform and have a closer gap of reaching that proficiency because of the knowledge piece. So in CKLA, one of the hallmarks, as I mentioned, is that they have daily read alouds. And I'd like you to think back. We know as adults that it's so powerful to have young students, young children sitting beside us as we're reading books to them, right? And they can't necessarily identify what those words are, but as they hear you read to them, they're gaining knowledge, they're gaining understanding. So we know that that is a natural process for oral language to be a pivotal part of the reading process for students to gain that understanding. So as Megan mentioned, there's that great visual of Scarborough's rope, where there's foundational skills, as Brittany talked about. And then the second strand of that is really the knowledge building, which comes into play with vocabulary too. So CKLA, in those daily read alouds, has some robust, very rich vocabulary that students are explicitly and intentionally taught. For example, one of the pilot classrooms that we did this in, in kindergarten, in Amanda's classroom, was in regards to a unit that was about seasons and weather. And one of the vocabulary terms, when I was looking at it, I was like, "Oh, my gosh, Amanda", it had our kindergartners learning the word characteristics, which is not a typical word that kindergartners, five or six-year-olds would know, right? But within the context of that unit, characteristics was taught to them about the characteristics of seasons. For example, winter, a characteristic would be perhaps it's cold or perhaps it's snowy. So that word characteristics was built as we talked about the different sci, excuse me, sciences of seasons and weather. But then we were able to take that word characteristic and transport it over into math and say, "What are the characteristics of a circle? What are the characteristics of triangle, of a square? And then even further, what are the characteristics of a kindergartner walking quietly down the hallway?" So all of a sudden, we took this one word from one story, from one unit, and were able to transparently have them see how it had meaning in all aspects of their life. And that's one of the things I think that is really ideal in CKLA is that there's very intentional choices that have been made about the vocabulary that our students are going to be exposed in, those read aloud aspects. The other thing, as Megan mentioned, was that it's a knowledge building program. And we know that, you know, the majority of our students here in Westfield come to school with background knowledge. They've had life experiences, they've had wonderful relationships or discussions with adults where they've had that knowledge that they're bringing to us, but some don't. And so the, the beauty of CKLA is it's exposing them to very complex text that's rich in science and in social studies, there's great fictional pieces. And every time they're acquiring more and more knowledge, as Megan mentioned, it acts like Velcro, so they can stick that knowledge to something that they already have prior understanding. So that when they have the decoding, that mechanics of sounding out those letters and being able to know how to read them, they already have the background knowledge and that oral language that we've built with those read alouds. And when those come together, that makes for proficient reading comprehension. And that is to me, our ultimate goal. We want students to be leaving our classrooms, being able to have wonderful experiences with literature, but truly to be able to understand what they're reading. And then one other aspect, and then I'll transition over to Amanda, is there's great, great options for teachers to have rich discussions and discourse in regards to these texts. So one of the things that we, we witnessed in our classrooms is these topics and these texts are really engaging for students. And they are things that we didn't think that probably would be what we would be teaching. But then to see them transfer that learning and knowledge into writing and integrate it into the social studies and science, it's just fantastic. So I wanted to fill you in with a little bit more aspect of that other part of the strand of the rope, which is that knowledge building vocabulary and obviously the authentic- strand of the rope, which is that knowledge building vocabulary, and obviously the authenticity of being able to discuss and write about what they know. So thank you for the opportunity.
Hi, I'm here to share my experience as a classroom teacher with utilizing this curricular, being involved in the curricular resource selection process and piloting. Our adoption process was informative, transparent, and collaborative, which is always appreciated by teachers. Key stakeholders included administration, instructional coaches, ELA lead, classroom teachers, and intervention teachers. We prioritized building a shared understanding of the five 10As of the science of reading book, study, and the professional development along the way to help us have consistent messaging in our buildings and be able to share with all grade levels. This was also a very teacher-driven decision-making process. The ELA team leaders from each grade level participated to ensure diverse perspectives from all content grade level teachers, and alongside instructional coaches who provided us insights and best practices for how the learning connected amongst all grade levels. We also had the opportunity to meet as grade level teams to establish vertical alignment to provide understanding of each grade level's needs. And this resulted in, again, consistent messaging and identification of those essential curricular resource features that we need to align with science of reading. The process was also very comprehensive in that the coaches developed a detailed criteria based on the IDOE framework to review for us. We, as ELA teachers, provided feedback and asked clarifying questions, and then we got to complete evaluations on all the resources. And our findings were that CKLA truly is designed to build knowledge in areas of history, science, literature, and geography, not to mention the foundational skills that Brittany referenced. CKLA stood out for its depth in building that background knowledge and developing robust vocabulary. Unlike other programs, we found that one example that was kind of unique, as for me as a classroom teacher and doing years of community, community helper units, was that instead of just doing your typical, it then built a historical perspective in that it talked about the relationships of towns and townspeople, and how they contribute to a colloquial town, which was really fun for the kids to learn about. They learned about millers and bakers, and how that relationship works, how they barter, and how the millers contribute to the bakers by grinding wheat with grindstones or mills. So it was really fun to see the kids interact with those vocabulary words and act out being a miller and being a baker. This reached diverse learner needs by providing a rich, shared experience where there was something new for everybody to learn. My classroom particularly has multilingual students, high ability, and it really helped with that language acquisition. Spiraling vocabulary and student engagement was another piece that we loved about CKLA. CKLA, it provided predictable routines and engaging vocabulary-building activities to support language acquisition. CKLA cleverly spirals vocabulary to connected concepts across both nonfiction and fiction lessons, across units, and across that concept that we're working towards learning. And this allows for multiple varied exposures to that building vocabulary piece. Students engaged in meaningful, interactive conversations to make student thinking visible and authentic, writing on, and they shared, had writing that they could do on shared experiences versus trying to think of something on the spot. Alignment and creativity is effortless with CKLA. It aligns clearly to the Indiana State Standards and the Science of Reading. It's user-friendly for teachers, and it provides alignment throughout the district using a research-based approach with explicit instruction. But it also allows for teachers to be artful and creative in lesson planning, which makes the learning joyful and engaging. In conclusion, thanks to this teacher-driven adoption process, it has helped guide the ELA team in making informed decisions focused on raising student achievement, and has allowed us to confidently choose a curriculum resource aligned to science of reading. Thank you, Dr. Hoover, for orchestrating this fair and equitable process, and thank you to the board for allowing me this opportunity to share my insights with you this evening.
Thank you to all of you, Brittany and Laura and Amanda. So I just wanted to, just to kind of summarize, just a couple of things about the process and not to reiterate, but just as a reminder to the school board of trustees in the process, the state of Indiana, going back, there was five resources that were adopted by the state that could be chosen. We went through this process and began, before we did any of that work, we worked with Dr. Aaron McNeil, who was a literacy specialist in the science of reading. In the first four to five meetings we spent with the committee, simply learning about the science of reading and some of the changes that come along with that. Around January, we transitioned to more of a adoption versus the evaluation. And in the adoption piece is when we went through, we actually looked at all five resources using a rubric that was developed by the teachers of Westfield, and went through each one of them and gave, you know, an hour or two for each resource. We actually had to add additional meetings just because of the time that it took to do a thorough, comprehensive review. And really, the process began with eliminating any resources that we felt like didn't meet our needs, as opposed to trying, and we kind of started with five and tried to kind of whittle it down. And we got down to our three top resources, and then brought those three companies in for a short version that would introduce their resource to us and gave us an opportunity to ask questions as a committee. After that meeting, we did an initial review and then a consensus ranking, because we wanted to get down to our top two. And it became evident from that meeting that we did have two top components. CKLA was one of them, and Savis Learning, my view, was the other resource that we were looking at. We did a more in-depth review of both those resources, and then for the sort of finale of the adoption, we brought those two committees in for two resources in, and they had multiple members from their company, and they did an hour and a half deep dive presentation. And then we allowed our teachers on the committee to do a, to develop a unit using the resources. We did a 30-minute question and answer that, quite honestly, we had very candid questions about some of the concerns we had with each resource. As I'm sure you've heard many, many times, there's no such thing as a perfect resource. They all have areas that need to be reviewed, and we wanted to ask those questions, so we did. Our teachers did a phenomenal job of really, really asking the tough questions and making the publishers answer them on the spot. And then the final stage was an activity that I thought was a great, a great idea by our coaches, was to have, instead of them working with their grade level peers, for example, the sixth, fourth grade teachers, we took the committee and we divided them up, so we had a kindergarten first, second, third, fourth, and then instructional coach, and then other members, all working together, but they were all from different schools. And the value of that was simply because we wanted to look at this as a district resource, not a building resource, or not a grade level resource. And so we had members from different schools and different grades be able to share openly about the things they loved, about the things that they had questions about still. And then eventually, we gave the committee three to four days after that to go back. And this was a key part of the process, was we asked them, as liaisons on the English Language Arts Committee, their job was to bring all this information back to their team, and then their job was to represent their team when they voted on the consensus ranking, not for themselves. In other words, there were three or four or five members back at their school that, when Amanda went back to her team, she then had to have the job to say, here's all the information we shared. We actually had a document that had CKLA on one side and Savis on the other, and we used all of our rubric points, and we wrote down all the things about both programs. And then allowed our liaisons, our representatives, to go back and really share with their team all the information that they had gained. It gave their team time to ask questions, to get feedback, to give feedback and so forth. Obviously, the committee members were the most knowledgeable, because they had been at eight to 10 meetings throughout the year. But we did try to keep all teachers up to speed. So throughout the course of the year, we did a science of reading training with all teachers by our coaches. And then we did two or three meetings with our updates with all our teachers to keep them up to speed. So when they came back and voted, they were representing the members of their entire team, not just, not just their own vote. And, and for example, we said, you know, if you feel one way, but your team believes differently, I would expect the representative to vote with a consensus of their team. When the votes came back and the consensus came out, we did have 54 votes turned in, 40 of those ranked CKLA as the first, 14 ranked Savis as the first. So by percentage, it was about just under 75% to 24, 25%. So really, a three to one consensus or ratio that, of the committee, that was in favor of adopting CKLA as the resource. As Dr. Athas shared earlier, that we felt that was a very strong enough consensus going in, quite honestly, in full transparency. Anything above 60% to me would have been a win. 50/50 would have been a different discussion. We would have maybe had to sit down and, and really look at the process and maybe take more time, because quite honestly, we never wanted to have more than 40% of our teachers sort of objecting, or maybe not agreeing with the choice that was made. So we felt pretty good about the vote of there, the consensus voting. And then just about their information, in full transparency, there are some things I want the board to know. The voting did show that certain grades were maybe more in favor of the ranking than others. But there were only two grades, K and 1 were unanimous for CKLA. All the other grades or levels had some level of both CKLA or both Savis, my view. So that was, that was, excuse me, otherwise, fifth grade as well. K-1 and fifth grade were all unanimous in CKLA. Grades 2, 3, and 4 in the instructional coaches and the literacy teachers all had votes for both, both resources. Our next steps with, with the approval by the board would be to then begin, of course, the ordering stage of materials, to begin the professional development that'll take place beginning this summer, which will be live in person here with our teachers, with representatives from the company Amplify, which is the publisher of CKLA. And then, of course, we will be meeting throughout the entirety of next year, once a month with the Language Arts Committee, to do what we always do in the first year implementation, is to review and to plan out the instructional planning for CKLA. As you, you were made aware that there were some, with all resources, we, we want to always look at them from every different angle, and there have been some concerns or questions raised to us about some of the content or some of the information that is associated with CKLA. So I wanted to take just a moment to preemptively ask, answer a few of those questions. I have filled out a few of those questions, I believe some of you have even received some questions from patrons, and I've received several emails from teachers for both pro and, and also some concerns for both CKLA and Savis. The one thing I will say that's very important to realize is that many of the questions that I've received on some of the concerns deal with what's called the trade books of CKLA. The trade books of CKLA are optional pieces that are, are simply recommended extra readings or parts of the program that could be used if you so chose. But we have no intention, in most of those cases, of choosing anything that would go against, quite honestly, that would make our teachers uncomfortable, that would go against what I would believe is our community norms. But to ensure that's going to happen, we are going to go through a process with our teachers this summer to review that. We also are going to offer that up to our parents and ask if we can have parents join that committee, so we can concurrently and jointly go through that process and have some pretty open discussions. And if there's any areas that we believe that we don't feel that would be age-appropriate or that would meet our community norms and beliefs, then we will supplement or supplant those with other areas, or simply move those skills and standards to other units. One of the keys when you adopt a new resource is usually they give you enough for a year and a half, a year and a half work worth of days. We are going to have to do some of that cutting anyhow, and so that's not going to be a concern of ours. But I do think we're going to want to go through that process in year one. We're also working with the CKLA advisor. I reached out and told them some of our concerns, and they're going to be working with us on kind of helping us do that process as far as meeting our needs, and we're going to be working with somebody who's done this with other districts that have gone through this process. As a reference, Crown Point Schools up in northern Indiana, Lawrence Township, Washington Township, Muncie Schools are all using CKLA. It would be my expectation that next year, when many other schools are going through this process, that many also will adopt CKLA. Some, some will not, some will go a different route, but I would imagine that it'll be one of the top choices when many schools go through this process next year.
Right, I'm going to jump in. So that, where we are, again, I guess my summary is, we're focused on a process of consensus. I also want to clarify, right, the, the program, the resource, is not the curriculum. Now, I know we use the word curriculum in that. It is a resource. The curriculum is outlined by the Indiana Academic Standards, the skills, the knowledge that we want kids to acquire at each grade level. Our teachers work in collaborative teams, they identify essential learnings, essential learning targets. This core resource becomes a tool to help us teach kids. Ultimately, we know, parents are the first educators of their children, and so we're going to work collaboratively with parents, it's what we always do. So in an implementation, so we have clear consensus, there's no doubt about that. And that's actually the easy part, in my opinion, doing this for several years. It's the implementation where we need to have, again, a tight process. So we'll continue to review the materials, and we will start helping teachers build those, those units ahead of time as they review materials. Now, when you work in a collaborative team, here's what happens, and Ryan said this, there is a process in place. If there's something, this is, this happens every day in our school district. As I'm preparing to teach, I'm making lesson plans, if there's something that doesn't sit right with me or a question that happens, the first thing I do, Amanda can tell you this, is I walk next door to my colleague, or at the next meeting, I ask them, hey, what do you think about this? If they both agree that, then they'll go to the whole team. And then the team might make an adjustment, or they'll bring in the instructional coach, and then they would go to the principal. By that time, if we're not feeling that this is a good fit, it, we remove it, right? Like, I mean, but any teacher has the opportunity to do that within their collaborative team. And so, so the, the two things that I want to make sure that we know through this process is, we're going to do a thorough, after the board adopts it, then what, you know, we would move forward with our coaches and continue the implementation process, we would design the first couple of lessons. We will, as Ryan said, continue, because parents' input's important with us, involving parents in the process. I believe Dr. Kaiser is going to work with Ashley Knott and do that maybe through our PTOs, so that we identify parents who then can communicate with schools on that process, right? So that all schools will be represented, and it will be, the, the selection will be through that process. I think that that would work well, and then the principals can be involved as well. And then, as our grade level teams then come back and start meeting and planning, they will continue to review, right? The downside, and this is why I thought, like, what resource we choose doesn't matter to me, right? I'm not, it's the process that matters. But there's a lot of work involved here, and our teachers are giving a lot of time. And so as they work together, they will also then need to be really connected to their coaches, who then can connect to the other grade level, or the other teachers in other schools, so that we stay lockstep in this implementation, so we can review it together and update it and make sure we get it right. And then finally, as always, what we ask is that if there are concerns, every day, we start with the principals, who are the first ones to address that with parents or patrons. If that needs to come to our office than it does to Ryan or to myself. If that needs to come to our office than it does to Ryan or to myself. And so that's kind of the steps that we've implemented at a high level. And then the last thing I'll say is I have had conversations with each of our principals who are absolutely 100% on board with not only adopting CKLA, but the process of implementation because ultimately they are the ones who will need to oversee it at each school to ensure that it goes smoothly. So with that, our recommendation is that the board adopts CKLA and we're happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Ask questions first?
There's, it can, it can go in either however the board chooses. At the pleasure of the board.
All right, I'll entertain questions at this time, Mike.
Thank you. One of the concerns that has been addressed to me is the online part of it with the trade books and stuff like that. So, and that's a supplement that goes into this curriculum and how to teach it and everything else. But some of them, some of the trade books make some parents nervous and things like that. So when a, when a young one goes online, will they be able to look at all the trade books? Or are they just looking at the trade books that the teacher and things like that have asked them to read?
Okay, so the trade books, actually CKLA doesn't even offer to sell. So as a teacher, they give you a list to say, if you want text sets, here are a list of books that would go with this and the teacher has to personally buy those books themselves. So they're not online, like, if I, to go online, I would have to, as a teacher, like, create an online library myself. Kids, they, like, there's, in CKLA, I can't, like, click the trade books and push them out. You have to purchase them separately and not through CKLA. They, it's literally just a list that says these books go along with the units. But it's not something, like, the teachers would have to do that themselves.
So you create your own library. So you cherry pick, when you go to the, the trade books website, whatever it is, it may be, you can cherry pick this one and put it in your library. So when the kids go to read that, they'll go into your library and not necessarily WW somewhere in Idaho.
Right, like, kind of, so like, literally it's just a list. CKLA says, here's a list, and then I would go on, like, Amazon to buy it. So like, CKLA doesn't even, you can't purchase them through them at all.
Okay. However, so this would be like geodes and decodable texts in our current program. And so we have a process for that that we would utilize, right? And we would have funds and then those would have to be approved in our office. So we're not, we're not, so there is a process to get, if we need these texts, to do that. And in our past, just so, just to be clear, because I've heard people say, well, you know, either the science or social studies, we have bought decodable texts that have a social studies base and a science base to implement because that knowledge is so essential to that. So we, if we need those texts, we would go through a consensus process and try to be consistent across the district. And then there would be a review, once they were selected, that Ryan and I would have to sign off on in our office. Now, I'm not saying someone couldn't buy a text on Amazon themselves. We work really hard to say to our teachers, you should not have to use your own resources.
And monies.
And, yeah, your own monies. We, we have a process to do that and then we'll provide that for you.
And CKLA says you should be able to teach the entire curriculum without any of those trade books. You don't like, the entire, everything provided, like, those are just kind of like extra for you in your library, but you don't need any of them to teach the curriculum.
Right, and that's their opinion. But like some of the parents out here, they might have different opinions and stuff like that. And we want to be able to address all those concerns.
But we will, so the, we use the term using the resource with fidelity. And I want to, again, define, that does not mean we open up on page one and go to page two and to page three. What that means is we use that resource and only that resource. However, internally, we have a process to say, we are not going to do this. Like, one of the most important things to do on any resource, as a former math teacher, is to agree upon what you're not going to use because you have too much stuff to begin with. So we are not going to add trade books into the mix in year one with this program. We don't have time, nor do we know the program well enough that we would want to do that. Now, that does not mean we aren't going to have independent reading time in our schools. We always have that and every one of our teachers, for the most part, unless they're new, have robust classroom libraries where kids can read if they have time to read and do some independent reading. But that is separate kind of from the reading block, if you will, or the literacy block.
And Mr. Steele and members of the board, the committee would be charged with, the committee would be charged with that process. Now, we are going to get a jumpstart on it this summer with our parent and teacher group. And this first year, we wanted, we kind of planned to stay two or three units ahead of, so we'd always be looking ahead to make sure, quite honestly, that nothing really catches us off guard, that we're, that we're okay with everything. So what I envision is after year one, we should have resolved any kind of questions or.
Concerns or anything else.
Concerns and, and the committee, because we believe in doing everything, you know, by consensus when it comes to a common resource. So we would have members of, for example, Amanda and her sixth kindergarten or first grade teachers would be going through the units and they're going to be looking at them. And if they come across an area that they say, you know, a few of them say, let's take a different, a deeper look at this, and they make a decision, well, then that's going to be the decision that we share then with the entire kindergarten community moving forward. And that's going to happen, of course, across the grades. Now, as we, as we all know, there's going to be probably moments of contention or disagreement or debate just because, but that's a good thing because we want, we want to scrutinize in those situations, have open debate and discussion. And then ultimately, Dr. Atha and myself would need to, you know, factor into that final decision. But, so there's going to be a process, multiple layers of variables to do this. And I, and I feel like between that, our teachers, our parents, and then our representatives from CKLA who are committed to working with us throughout that process this summer, that we would, we would be making the right decision with that.
Right, and I do want to go on record that I appreciate the process that you guys went through. Because I know a lot of times people don't have choices and they're handed something and saying, hey, do it, make it work. You know, at least here, the, the teachers and everybody had a say in it and had an opinion. And you don't want everybody to think alike because if everybody thinks like me, you guys are in trouble.
Well, I, I think you make a good point. So where I am, you know, after being here three years in this area is implementing this, we actually are more aligned and tighter than we currently are because I visit a lot of classrooms every day, you know, each month, right? And I would say to you, there is a lot of variety. Now, I, I will argue that in our K-1, 2 classrooms, foundations, like, I know foundations, I can do it. I know Hagerty, I can do those things. So that, Ryan is right, that is consistent. I believe that was, that actually probably came out of the fact that our coaches did some of those lessons during the pandemic online. They then had a model for our teachers to use when they started doing it themselves. So it was a good training piece and we implemented. But the implementation went really well. But what I would say to you is I am more confident that we will have a better handle on what our kids are experiencing as we implement this than I currently do. I'm just going to tell you that right now. And so, so not saying we're doing anything bad. I'm just saying because units of study was not done in a consensus manner and we are splintered throughout the district, we have teachers figuring it out as they go, right? And they don't have a core adopted resource that's research-based. They do a phenomenal job. Everybody knows our revered teachers, especially our teachers, because they'll do anything for our kiddos who need it. However, we need, we know through this process that a research-based core resource, especially in the science of reading, is essential to meeting the needs of each of our students. And so that's, that's why through this process, I watched it, you know, unfold and why I support the committee's decision in the recommendation to the board tonight.
And from my understanding, the way I'm grasping this, the more I learn, the curriculum that we're adopting is a process on how to teach kids how to read. It's not the books that we are reading.
Yeah, so I would say that there, it were, it's aligned with the Indiana Academic Standards and it also is grounded in the research that is the science of reading, the five components. We're, and then we're adding in kind of the background knowledge piece that's, we'll, we'll have focus on. So it is the tool that will help us ensure that kids have not only the foundational skills that they need, the, learning the Indiana Academic Standards, our employability skills, but then also that knowledge building component that as kids become older, right? You, you learn to read and then you read to learn, right, is the way to say it. And this component, the thing that I think probably speaks more than anything is that the, the 5th grade teachers were unified at that, at the piece. And, and one thing that I know there, the reason that probably is, is this is a great resource, but they work together every day in a collaborative team. So getting consensus that way is a lot easier than getting consensus across six elementary schools who don't always work every day together. But through the process Ryan led, I do believe we have consensus.
I too, just wanted to give a special thank you to Dr. Hoover and other members of the administration that spent time thoroughly explaining the process and helping us understand the nuances of the resources, what was available through the state's narrow approval, genuinely. And then this discussion tonight to really understand how the trade content, which does come with concern.
Absolutely.
For inappropriate content or, you know, just inappropriate age character, it's, it's not characterized correctly in, in a lot of opinions for age appropriateness, that those are not readily available. The students are not going to be able to just click buttons and get into that content and that it would continue to go through that same diligence process that the districts had in place for a number of years here now. And I feel has been successful to, to make sure that kids have the right instruction with, without.
Well, I think the other thing that I value in, through this process, that as well as we want kids, you know, reading books that they enjoy reading and that they engage in, right? So it might be that I just need a different story or book because of that, right? I, I mean, I've adopted pre-AP curriculums in, in 8th grade, trying to boost that and had teachers tell me, listen, the kids aren't engaging in the story, we need a different story. It wasn't that it was a bad story, they, so we switched, right? Because we listened to our teachers when they tell us things like that. And so, so we, I think we have those, those pieces in place. We've done a great job, especially the last three years, and we'll continue to do that. I do, I do, the, the one thing that I did want to mention, and Ryan mentioned it, one of the great, that last piece where we went across schools K through 4 in that last 30 minutes or so was the piece for me because in that consensus process where the will of the group is evident, even to those who most oppose it. And so you need their voice to be heard. And in that process, I watched diligently, I, I listened to teachers try to convince other teachers passionately about what they wanted. And, and so at the end of it, when that vote happened, like, everybody had an opportunity to try to convince others to see it their way, if you will. That's kind of what the consensus process is and that learning. And at the end, in the vote, it came out, you know, 74, 26, 40 to 14. And that, to me, is a consensus that we need to move forward and that those who, who had questions or opposed it will still support it as we move forward and we will support them as they implement it. That's what we do. So again, if there's more questions, we're, we're happy to address those. We don't want to try to pressure to move it forward. We want to make sure questions are answered before you entertain the motion.
Very good, thank you.
I was just going to say, I know we've had some, you know, concerns brought forth recently. And I also just want to say that I appreciate the plan going forward to continue to involve teachers and involve some parents through a good process. So just want to thanks, thank you for the continued good work.
I'll just mirror that. Thank you very much. It's been a little bit stressful and anxiety, but I think that's because everybody cares so darn much. So thank you very much for all the hard work you've done and the hard work you're going to be doing implementing this the way you want to. And just think, by the time you hone it and perfect it, it'll be time to do it all over again.
Which is, we could talk about that.
I will just say, Ryan and John, if people want to be part of your committee that aren't part of Ashley's PTO groups, who should they reach out to?
So that's a great question. They can reach out to Dr. Hoover, to myself, or to Dr. Kaiser. That's not, you know, we're not going to say, oh, you didn't reach out to the right person. What we, we do want to do is manage that so it's not, you know, folks aren't saying it's weighted one way or the other. We want to be kind of a representative group. But certainly, if somebody wants to participate, we want them involved, right? That's what makes us a great community, that's what makes us a strong district. And as, as Ryan said, sometimes you, you learn more through disagreement, right? Like, if we all think and agree the same way, then only one of us is really needed, right? We don't need all of us. And so having this group, having the group Ryan had, and then having a representative group of our parents will only make us better.
And if a parent doesn't want to be part of that committee, but they want to come in and just look at the books, they can do that.
Yeah, and so I think we, I think I mentioned that we got those materials. I believe it was either at the April meeting, it might have been the March meeting, but I said, reach out to us if you want to review those materials. I will tell you, I'm not sure that we've had parents who aren't employed by us. We, obviously, we have many parents who are employed by us. But we have had several teachers over here reviewing and looking at and coming back after that process. They'd be here and I'm like, what are you, well, I just want to come back and look at something. And so, but anyway, they're, and they're still here and we're open. We do have reduced hours during the summer, so scheduling is probably better than, but if you show up during our business hour, someone will be here to allow them to review those.
Okay, thank you. So at this time, I will make a motion to approve the CKLA for K through 5 English and Language Arts Resource as presented.
So moved. You said you will entertain a motion?
Yes, sorry.
So moved.
Thanks Rebecca, is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the CKLA for K through 5 English Language Arts Resource. Is there any questions after we agree? Okay, all right.
Right.
Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Dr. Hoover, Dr. Atha, and all of you lovely ladies that came to our meeting. We will return to the next item on the agenda, which is going to be the English Language Arts Resource Adoption, grades 6 through 8.
Thank you guys very much. Members of the board, this process will be a little bit, hopefully a little bit simpler for you. And our 6 through 8 teachers, 6th grade went through the entire process with K through 5. As the year progressed, well, two things. One, we obviously know halfway through our adoption, our 6th grade will be then joining and transitioning with our 6, 7, 8. So three years into this process, we're going to have a change. So we knew we had that coming, but we also have three years where they're not going to, where they're still going to be at the, at the current location. So we had to sort of, 6th grade was sort of a fluid year because we wanted them to be part of the K-5. But most of the resources that were approved by the state were K-5 only. And 6 through 8 was a different realm. And so, and then the second part was, is Dr. Atha and I learned through the meetings with the state this year that 6 through 8, the science of reading, which traditionally has been held to really a K-5 grade levels, the, the indication was that they are really going to try to continue with the science of reading framework through grades 6 through 8. And the reason that's significant is because I would say in general, many many schools use more of a traditional resource for their elementary schools. By middle school, some of them begin to do more novel-based and choice-based books that, so sometimes a resource is not required. When we went to the science of reading and we learned this, we felt it was our duty to at least look at some of the resources that had been approved. And the options for middle school are even lesser than they were for elementary school. But we did look at two, once again, Savis, and there was called My Perspectives, and then Study Sync, which was a McGraw-Hill product. We did a very similar process. Now, I will say, seventh and eighth grade came on much later in the process. They came in in about February, March, and we had to kind of speed up. They're actually going to be doing the Language Arts for nine through, well, seven through twelve. We will continue that next year. But seven and eight, we thought, as we looked at it, and we brought them in, and we wanted to at least give them the option of looking at these resources. So once again, we did the whole process. We brought in the companies. They met with all the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade teachers twice and did a very deep dive. And I will tell you that the the middle school teachers did a great job of asking questions. They made it very apparent that they were seeking a foundational resource, just like K through five. If anything, I can say, our, it's not, our, the work ethic of our teachers at the middle school is, of course, outstanding. But they are feeling like they need a little more alignment and a and a resource that they can use as a foundational resource as they as they move forward. And as they went through both of these, although they liked both of them, with ninety-five percent consensus, they chose Study Sync. So to me, that was, that was obviously consensus that we were looking for and beyond. And that was sort of an easy, sort of a slam dunk when it came, comes to curriculum work. So we wanted to bring that to your attention, and our intention would be to adopt Study Sync for the next six years for grades six through eight. And I just, just for a little more information, we are actually gonna get that at a reduced rate because sixth grade, we will adopt it fully. But at seventh and eighth, the way they like to do it is they won't adopt all the resources for all students. They will adopt approximately two hundred books for student manuals and teacher, teacher manuals and student manuals that they will use as class sets. And then we will use those, they allow those for some of our students that like to write in the books. We will just reorder those two hundred. So we're actually gonna be paying less than we normally would because they find that the digital piece at grade seven and eight is usually more than accommodating for the, for the students. And so that's actually kind of an added bonus as well. So it would be my recommendation, and Dr. Atha's and I's recommendation for the board to approve Study Sync for Language Arts for grades six through eight. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Is there a question?
Ryan, this probably maybe for Brian, but also maybe you with your experience. You just mentioned, you know, the reduced rate, and I see the comments about maybe only doing the digital platform, which would significantly reduce the price. So obviously, we've seen inflation affect a lot of things with the cost for schools now. Would you say, like, curriculum services like this? Have you seen the prices go up due to inflation? Or I guess just trying, just curious, like, how big of a concern that is with curriculum these days?
Yes, it has, not to the, probably not to the level of building construction, for example. It has gone up some. I look at it more so from the last adoption. How much has it grown in six years? Some of it, because because from year to year, you know, we don't, you know, I always go back to the last adoption. And then we go back to looking at how much our students were paying. Now, one of the things that helps us out is we pay for it over the course of four years. And so that that helps obviously reduce the cost. And obviously, with the state funding it differently now, that that also factors in. So I would say it's minimal. One thing the state did do, and I I will say, give kudos on this, is that when when the publishers presented to the state to get on the approved list, they had to show their pricing at that time. And the pricing, although they had some flexibility, they obviously had to keep it in a range that would be acceptable. And so most of the publishers that I've looked at are all within a three to five dollar range, depending on what you get. As long as you don't, quite honestly, splurge and and overorder or get things that are maybe additional add-ons, and stick with the core foundational program, and take advantage of these, the benefits that you receive in the first year of adoption. So if we were to adopt it, say, for one year, you lose about twenty to thirty percent of the discounts that they give you for ordering over the course of six years. There's always a little bit of risk with that because, you know, you're locked into it for six years. But we we feel confident in these. So, yeah. So I would say, as I said, that would be a three to five dollar probably that I've seen from from the last six years. Yeah.
At this time, I will entertain a motion to approve Study Sync for our grades six through eight English and Language Arts Resource as presented.
So moved.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve Study Sync for our grades six through eight English and Language Arts Resource. Is there any discussion or any more questions at this time? All right, seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nope. Motion passes. All right, thank you, Dr. Hoover. We will turn to Dr. Atha for the next item on the agenda, the multilingual newcomer resource adoption.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Wells, members of the board. So just like in other areas we've already talked about, or in two areas, as we grow, we also have a rapid increase in multilingual learners, our newcomer students to our district. And so I believe we might be, at last count, I think we had fifteen certified EL teachers that serve multilingual students, especially in their language, English language development. And so as students come to us that are newcomers to to either our country or our community and have a language barrier, they have many challenges in, uh, to not only learning in schools, but we talked a little about, you know, some of that background knowledge and connecting to. So this curriculum helps us align across the district in how to address those challenges and gives our EL teachers a tool. It is aligned with the Read, the WEDA test that tests that English language skills. And so then they can, with that data, align the interventions and support they provide students as, they help them with their language development, and then all ultimately supporting their learning in our schools. And so we just believe it's time to have a core resource for those teachers that's aligned as we, you know, Crystal Thompson came into, she's in her second year in central office. And so as she leads that program and leads the alignment of the resources, not only across the district, but as kids matriculate through our district, this would be a valuable tool for those teachers. And so we recommend approval of this resource.
Thank you. At this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the newcomer resource adoption of Vista Get Ready for our multilingual students' language acquisition and development as presented.
So moved.
Excellent. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to approve the newcomer resource adoption of Vista Get Ready for our multilingual students' language acquisition and development. Is there any discussion or any questions at this time?
Quick question. Is there any other funds available for this, other than these Title III monies or no?
So the Title III money is our grant for English learners we get from the state.
Right. That's all they give us?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, I mean, I don't know the total amount. I can get that for you, but.
That's all right. I just wondered.
But those, that's one where, even though we are fast, you know, growing, it's in comparison. It's kind of like.
Right, yeah, there's other districts that have even more.
Right. And then so, you know, that complexity, as Brian has talked about, for us. So we never, whether it's our Title I support or whether it's our Title III support, we never feel like it totally meets the need we have, but we do the best we can. And we have amazing teachers. So, and Brian does an amazing job helping us, you know, pool our funds to meet the needs of our kiddos.
For sure. Thank you.
At this time, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed say nope. Motion passes. All right, next on the agenda is the second reading of the twenty twenty-four dash twenty-five student handbooks. Dr.
Yes, so we have the second reading, and we've tried to do this in a manner where we approach it like a policy, where we review and then we adopt. One thing that did come up, if you noticed, in the draft policy is, we finally got, so the, in the legislative session this past year, there's a new law that prohibits the use of wireless devices, which is defined in the law, and then also during instructional time, which is defined in the law, which is in the class, but it's not passing periods or lunch. And so we had tried to implement prior to that policy, some feedback from the school boards into the handbooks to align with that law. The early versions of that conversation with our legal team was to say, because there are four options to allow cell phones, and one of it is the teacher can approve the use of a cellphone. And early on, we said with administrative approval. Our thought process was, because this new law had a lot of conversation, we didn't want people saying that our teachers were just running wild, right, that they had to. But our teachers feel like that should be more either in a policy or teacher handbook, that the student handbook should be about what the students and the parents need to follow, not what the teachers need to follow. So we had a late change, and we agree with that absolutely, as we've had time to process and think through. However, as we tried to implement this new, I really felt like, you know, the law need to be incorporated in there. Here is how the philosophy is in our district. So I want to say this before we do anything. So the board might want to ask questions prior to. So in elementary and the intermediate school, we pretty much say no cell phones or communication devices. We have kids that have, I don't know if you've seen those phones that are watches that are phones that can call, like, six people. But we tell them they're not supposed to use that. We're very, I think, family-centered in saying, if that happens, we'll call the parent, we'll work it out. Like, we're not, we're not holding kids too accountable for making that mistake. We might have to take it for the moment and give it back and things like that. But there's not really the code of conduct piece. So that's, and and if you read our handbook, it's very much, we're asking for parents' support in trying to keep kids from being distracted. We understand this is a part of the world. Then you get to the middle school, and the middle school is a shift. I worked in a middle school, and we try to be very clear with kids in the middle school, what they can and can't do, and what they're gonna get in trouble for if they do do it, right? And so I always say, you know, their job is to show up every day and see what they can get away with. And our job is very, to draw a very clear line and say, if you cross this, we're gonna have to deal with it, right? So and they believe at our middle school that you should put those phones away at seven forty-five when that morning bell rings, and you shouldn't bring them out till three thirty-five when the afternoon bell dismisses you. They actually implemented that last year. But as I tried to implement, as I tried to put in this new policy to align with the policy that we're not gonna adopt till next month, right, so we have some time, it just didn't flow very well. And as I've had some conversations, the the question came up, oh, let me finish. At the high school, we take a very much what I think the law is, that can't have it out in class unless there's a legitimate reason. There's four defined. But during passing periods and lunch, you can have it out, right? And so little more mature kids, if you don't, if you do have it out, there are consequences that we work through. But it was during instructional time, you violated a rule, and here's the consequences. So the disconnect is a little bit between the middle school, that journey from the middle school to the high school. I didn't get a a great opportunity to talk, uh, I think Stacy Swan is building a Habitat for Humanity House. And so she wasn't available to have a conversation, or at least I didn't want to pull her off the job site to have this conversation today. But I I know how they feel about it. So the real question, you know, from the board, do you have questions about that? I think we do have time. If you either want to pause or adopt, we could adopt the handbooks with final details of that policy to be worked out. But I don't know what questions you have, so I'll just pause and see if you have some, and then say, how do we want to proceed?
I just shut down my computer, so now it's something in front of me. But I believe with the middle school and the high school, there was some line about on the school-sponsored trip. So like the soccer trip that we just approved tonight, it, I think it mentions, like, no cell phones on a school-sponsored trip.
Right.
And I I wonder about not only enforcement of something like that, but also, you know, if if my kid is going to, what, what do we say? Was it Columbus? Yeah, that other school over there. You know, if it's a a couple-hour ride, the parent might want to get in touch with that student, right? But we're saying they're not allowed to communicate.
Yeah. And so I would say to you, this is, as I've had time to process it, and I did, Kyle Miller is around. So in our shift from what I would call behavior modification to restorative practices, what you're really shifting to is that you're trying to solve problems. If a kid makes a, if one of our students makes a mistake, repair any harm that was done. But they, the biggest issue is, you're trying to build skills so they don't make the same mistake over again, right? So I'm not just trying to dumb those. So in having some conversations with you, what skills are we building? And is is it really, if we just shut it down and and then on everything? So if if I have to call and say, hey, you know, the bus is running late. Now, most parents track on Life 360 and things like that. But but whatever it might be, right? That it's not practical to say a student would get in trouble for making a call. And and again, I think that would be allowed under, hey, get permission from the teacher or the coach, right? But but sometimes I think, especially to look at the middle school language, we just have too much language in there. We're trying to cover too much, where I actually believe the law covers it, right? Like, here's, don't use it during instructional time. If there's other times, I don't want you to, and it defines all the devices, because we even have laser pointer, whatever. And so trying to clean that up a little bit so it's not so long and comprehensive is something we want to do. But I also know that we want to move the adoption of the handbooks forward so that we can begin to make those live for next year. So one of the things is, you know, we could adopt them tonight as we do the final adoption next month for the policy. We could also do a revision to any one of the handbooks in that area as well. So so.
So you're saying we could adopt.
Because the the elementary handbook, the intermediate handbook, and the high school handbook are probably good, right? So you could adopt those and pause on the middle, we can say this motion however you want to say it. Or you can adopt them all, knowing that we'll need to come back and probably update the language in the middle school handbook at our July meeting.
Was it the intermediate one that gave the specific time of from something, something to four fifteen? No device?
Yeah, they they had that, they had it, it was both in the intermediate and the middle school had listed their times, I think, at some point. The 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 intermediate, I think, was, like I said, their their approach was more, hey, you know, more of the elementary, and they, like, they weren't giving consequences if you had them out. They were addressing, they said they might have to call home, they might have to confiscate it if you, if there's continual. But they did say that it should not be out during the school day.
But their school day ends at, what is their bell?
Oh, their bell's three forty-five, just like the high, or like the middle school. Three thirty-five.
So four fifteen, the kids are at home.
Yeah.
So my question back to the.
That probably needs to be revised.
My question would just be, are we also including not to have devices being used on the bus ride home?
So I think in some places it references that, you know, and again, whether it's home or on an athletic or a club trip, again, I would view a bus driver, not have studied all our bus rules, I review, would would view a bus driver like a teacher, right? Like, there might be an opportunity where they have given the child permission for whatever, for a legitimate reason, right? And I I often joke, I think it actually says for educational purposes, and calling mom to educate them about when I'll be home is educational purposes, right? And so, but 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 we trust our folks, right? And so if we meet the letter of the law, and also, again, I I think we all agree that cell phones need to be limited. They they can be a distraction to the learning process during instructional time. They can be, I know on buses, if if kids are not using them appropriately, they can be a distraction to the to the bus driver, or at least I've known that. They should, you know, be taking pictures and things like that. All those things can be addressed. So.
From a standpoint of a middle school coach, extracurricular activities and stuff, I've seen that evolution of the cellphone. I don't have a problem. I think in a handbook, you know, if the kid brings it to me or to an event on the best, on the best ride home, like ten minutes before we get home, I'd say, hey, call your parents, text your parents, let them know we're going to be there in fifteen minutes. That way, I'm not waiting a half hour for a parent to show up after we get to the school and things like that. And I have noticed that sometimes the kids will film their friend descend to their parents because their parents couldn't make it and things like that. So I think some of the extracurricular activities might be up to the coaches' discretion. But, I mean, that's something you can talk to the middle school about and get their thoughts.
I would say, my personal opinion is if a child is mature enough to hold a eight hundred dollar cellphone, they should be responsible enough to know when to or not use device, said device. So like, not during instructional time, hundred percent agree, right? I mean, I think we're overcomplicating the law. Maybe.
Well, and I think the questions are the places where, when I'm reading the different building versions, where they have expanded the definition, or there's additional time added before and after instructional time, that's where I'm like, how's that going to be enforced?
Right.
How's that going to work? I can appreciate a bus driver wanting the same respect and distract, distract, you know, distraction-free environment as a teacher, certainly could see that. But just in terms of the the wording here, and then the timeframes, you know, the student drop off and pickup, but if they're with their parent, is that too broad? Like, are there just some refinements that could be made that would help enforceability, reduce confusion, and eliminate just some overstep perhaps in places?
After school, you know, hey, I'm the fifth car back.
Yeah.
Yeah, so so with that, I mean, one of the things we could do, right, is we could table this, try to refine that. I can have an opportunity then to have some conversations with the principals or the APs, and then we could bring it back up at the work session. Are we going to approve, is there going to be an item on Thursday?
We we have a public hearing and a vote within the public hearing, so we could add to Thursday.
Yeah, so then we could, we, if we need to, I mean, we could always wait till July, but we could bring it back, table it tonight, make a motion to table this item, and then because, and then bring it back Thursday and see if we have updated language that the board is comfortable with, and then we can move forward and approve all the handbooks. Instead of trying to do it in piecemeal, let's just table the adoption of the handbooks, the second read.
Will it till Thursday give you enough time to communicate with everybody?
I have me tomorrow, but I can start. Well, the the main piece is I'm comfortable, I'm, yeah.
I mean, I think we could just be flexible. We know we're going to come back with a revision on this specific part that allows.
Yeah, or you can do that, or we can do it in July. You can revise it in July, the revision in July. That would give us more time.
What's the best?
Can we look at it Thursday and figure out if we still want to table it Thursday? We can table it today and Thursday if need be, but if you come back with us with what we like.
Except for that policy.
Let's, let's, I mean, I'm, if, I don't know what all's entailed in making it live, the changes live. So if you approve them, you can start doing that, right, with Zach, because there is some work there that needs to happen. And then, so you can approve the handbooks except for the
The state required new policy.
Yeah, the wireless device policy, which we will approve in July with final revision or something like that. I'm making it more complicated. I'm making it as complicated as it's written in some of the handbooks.
Because everything else is what?
Everything else is what's been there.
Yeah.
And everything, as far as that goes, so.
Well, and I think the high school, since they did not expand the law, there's no, there's no confusion or issue there.
There's a lines with the law.
There's a lines with the law. I think the, those additional paragraphs where you've got expansion beyond the law is, are the, are the handbooks then that would
Which is really
Re- require some clarification.
So how do we approve the handbooks with the exception of the intermediate school and knowing a revision's coming in July?
Perfect.
All right, everyone looking at that?
Yep.
All right, so at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the 2024-25 Student Handbook as presented for elementary or K through four and WHS and WHS Athletics, knowing that WIS and WMS will have a revision on the electronic policy coming to us in July.
So moved.
So moved.
Excellent, was there a second?
Sorry, that was before you, yeah, second.
Excellent. All right, so it's been moved and seconded to approve the student handbook. Is there any discussion or any questions at this time?
Nope, I like it.
All right, hearing done, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nope. Excellent, thank you, everyone. The final item is the curriculum update.
Curriculum is finished.
Oh, excellent, thank you.
For tonight.
All right, next up is
Also the success story.
Now we will hear from Josh Andrews for the communication update.
Thank you very much. This being the summertime, things are going to slow down a little bit. So the first thing we wanted to say is that the Shamrock Blast frequency will become down to a biweekly, so you will only get two emails from me a month. I'm sure you're upset about that. We, the Shamrock Academy applications will be live by the time the the blast comes out this, so we're going to do the blast this week and then after that every other week from then on. So the Shamrock Academy applications will be open from now until July fifteenth, and then we will name the the cohort before the school starts and get that going again in August. There's been an interesting amount of people reaching out, looking forward to the Shamrock Academy being, being applying. So I think we'll be have a good crop of people again this coming year. Sean and Bailey have been working hard on some construction update videos. I hope you guys have seen those. They've done one for the Early Learning Center, for the Transportation Center, for the Tennis Complex, and they're going to, going to start working on the one for the Kerry Ridge project that's going to be done. So it'll be kind of, be less of an update and more of a, this is what we have going on. And one more shout out to the Destination Westfield website that has been updated, and their videos are on there, and each each project has a page. And we're trying to make that the hub for if if any community member wants to know what's going on at this school or that project. All of the latest information will be there on the Destination Westfield webpage.
Is that the only place that's being shared, Josh? Just curious. I haven't seen the videos. So you just have to go to that one site?
Say that, you mean the videos?
The ones you just mentioned that they
The videos, they have been in the blast. So we're going to be doing at least, well, the plan was to do weekly, but regular updates, whether they're drone shots or video or something, they will always be in the most recent blast. Some of them will be shown on, shared on social media, but all of the info, all of that content that we create will be housed at the, on the Destination Westfield webpage under that project name. You can always go back there for the latest. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next is success stories.
Say, Josh, congrats on getting through the Leadership Academy for Hamilton County. Great job.
Thank you.
Did you want to start with success stories?
Yes, let's see, oh, I don't think I'm doing it.
Okay, well, we'll start down here. Bill has lots. So Rebecca, you go first. Eddie?
I was going to do
Successful kickoff to summer, so I hope everybody stays safe. That's it.
I think our baseball team is headed to
No, they, just regional champs.
Just regional champs.
Yeah, they lost, I see. Had an excellent season, though.
Excellent.
That was it for me.
I just want to do a quick reminder that teacher grants are open, and you can apply until September fifth. And then we are going to be doing a really cool event at the new library, Stuff the Bus. So everyone mark your calendars, July fifteenth. And then after that, Stuff the Bus, which is school supplies, donations, will then relocate to drop off locations at local banks. And we recently gave away a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars in scholarships, giving sixty-four Westfield High School students dollars. And the last thing to note is Rock the Block will be August second from five to seven thirty at the soccer fields. A little plug for the foundation tonight.
I just want to thank everybody from Westfield, Washington Schools for the great school year we had.
Congrats to all the spring sports for stacking up sectional regional championships. It's fantastic. We're known throughout the state, I think, in a lot of sports. And then also, great job on the groundbreaking for this facility and the Monon Trail Athletic stuff. That was a lot of fun. And what a great graduation. I think this is my fifth now. Oh, I took yours, I'm sorry.
No, I just wanted to make sure someone said so. Thanks.
Pretty awesome. So thank you.
I do want to mention that round one of the state golf tournament was today at Prairie View. We are currently tied for second going into tomorrow's final round. So Zinesville has a three-stroke lead over us and Garen. And so, and then Evansville North is in the hunt. They are plus twenty, we're plus nineteen, Zinesville's plus sixteen, and Noblesville's plus twenty, Leo's plus twenty-one. So, so it'll be, it's like it's been the last couple of years, it'll come down to the end probably. So, so good luck to them, as Bill said, a lot of success. And just congratulations again for a great school year. I didn't mention the, it should have, you know, they started moving dirt back here before the groundbreaking with the bulldozer, and all our kids were still here. And that one morning, someone came over and every, I don't think it was the little kids, but all those three and four-year-old kiddos were just lined up on that fence watching that bulldozer push dirt. They were, and they were waving to the guy on the bulldozer. So they were pretty excited about the addition and seeing all those big yellow machinery fired up and moving dirt. So you don't always get to see that when you're, they they were pretty close to it behind that fence, so they were pretty excited. So that's exciting, the great update. The tennis courts are amazing.
Our next, our next board meeting will be here July sixteenth at six thirty. So can I have a question for the meeting? Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Meeting is adjourned.